I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have August 12th, 2013, a special meeting, and August 19th, 2013.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Carol Ammons, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any additions or corrections to either one of those? Okay?
Yeah, I had, I think I had a question.
You have one? Okay, Bill?
And I guess it was August 19th, letter "I" new business. There was a motion and a second, but I didn't see a vote. On that number one, do you see where I am on the?
Uh, no, I don't.
Page five of six, at the very bottom of the page.
Oh, okay. Page five of six. Okay. Do you want to check that? At the bottom of page five, it says Alderman Smythe made a motion to approve Alderwoman Marlin seconded, but it doesn't talk about the vote. I think we approved it, and that would have been a roll call vote. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any additions. Okay, we will move on to petitions and communications. And I would like to read a proclamation and then something that was sent by Robin Arbiter, and then we can have the people who want to address the council. I have a proclamation by the mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, whereas in 1970 lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride LGBT events began in the United States and have since spread throughout the world, and whereas since the late 1970s, Champaign County residents have celebrated LGBT pride every year, and whereas in 1975, Urbana became the first city in Illinois to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, and whereas in 1977, Champaign became the second city in Illinois to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, and the second city in the nation to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity, and whereas in 1979, Urbana became the second city in Illinois and the third or fourth city in the nation to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity, and whereas in 2005, Illinois prohibited discrimination statewide on the basis of both sexual orientation and gender identity, and whereas in 2011, Champaign County began issuing civil union licenses to same-sex couples, which are the legal equivalent to marriage licenses under Illinois state law, and whereas the Fourth Annual LGBT Pride Fest sponsored by the Uniting Pride Center of Champaign County will be held from 2:00 PM Saturday, September 12th to 2:00 AM on Sunday, September 13th, 2013, at the Fluid Event Center at 601 North Country Fair Drive, Champaign, Illinois. Now therefore, we, Donald R. Gerard, Mayor of the City of Champaign, and Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim September 14th, 2013 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Day in the cities of Urbana and Champaign. And then I have a note from Robin Arbiter, who was unable to address the city council tonight, but she wanted to talk about bad tenants. What she wanted to say is that management and leases are the tools landlords have at their disposal in holding people accountable for their actions as tenants, and that if a company has bad tenants, it may also have bad management. I have seen time and time again managers send out notices regarding behavior, expected or forbidden of tenants. If such notices aren't followed up on, tenants learn not to pay attention to them. If, for example, a company wants tenants to keep indoor furniture off porches or out of yards and sends a notice to that effect, good management suggests a follow-up with a tour of the property and a notice to every household not in compliance within a few days of the scheduled effective date of the notice. She also goes on to say that people unfairly single out Section 8 recipients as bad tenants. However, often the opposite is true, says Robin. Some of the best tenants are Section 8 voucher holders. Most people, including myself, who qualify for Section 8, will do whatever is required to keep our vouchers, as they are our only means of keeping ourselves in safe, affordable housing. An often overlooked complaint by Section 8 voucher holders is that we are often living in complexes and situations which feel unsafe and not decent due to management companies' failure to adequately staff and supervise their properties. So quite often, Section 8 voucher holders feel just as imperiled by crime, noise, debris, deferred maintenance, et cetera, as their home-owning neighbors. In the end, some of these categorizations of people are not useful. A lawful, well-written lease and a fully-staffed, well-trained, and stable management team are the best tools for creating decent rental environments. These conditions can shape problematic tenant behavior through accountability and consequence, and will help retain residents who take pride in their homes and their neighborhoods. These tools, management and leases, are much more valuable as influences on tenant conduct than fences, walls, locks, signs, cameras, or notices. Built or technological tools are only as good as the managers responsible for them. Finally, tenants, who are sometimes called bad tenants, are not a fixed population. We are all capable of learning, growing, and changing. I have been myself a less-than-stellar tenant in my three decades as a renter. I was immensely well-served by being held properly accountable for my actions as a renter and not via social service interventions, but by management teams that were fully and appropriately staffed and well-trained. Thank you, Robin Arbiter. Okay. Carlos Donaldson.
My name is Carlos Donaldson, 406 Brookings Drive. I've been a resident of Urbana for over 50 years, been at the present location 37 years. First, I am opposed to a tax increase because as a homeowner, my taxes are high enough. Just recently, we had a sewer tax added. We cannot be compared to the City of Champaign. They have a part-time mayor. Now your salary position can be cut to part-time, or it seemed to be especially recently, when the mayor makes an unpopular decision, she leaves the city, and meetings are canceled, and there are no time to address concerns and questions about the decisions being approved. It is also not like the City of Champaign because meetings aren't canceled when the mayor is not present. The City of Champaign has someone to preside. Your chief of staff or deputy mayor should be able to conduct a meeting. There seem to be a lack of trust for those who serve with you and the people you were elected to serve. Might not be a bad idea to adopt the City of Champaign's form of government, a mayor part-time, a city manager who is all actively runs the city with assistance of his or her staff. Bike routes are being put in with monies from a grant, but the upkeep is placed on the taxpayers. Do we really need bike paths? Would it not be cheaper to have signs directing bikes and not putting the burden on the Public Works Department to restripe? Then maybe more money can be put in the budget to fix the unsafe streets in the city, unsafe for bikes, cars, and walking. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Elg. I live at 1002 West Clark Street, and I'm a grad student at the U of I. I understand the need to address the budget shortfall from Carl's property tax exemption, but I think we need to look for a bigger-picture solution. One of the arguments for the tax is that while Champaign did it, so it's okay, but when we look at the bigger picture, just because Champaign does something that it shouldn't have, doesn't mean that we should. In fact, Urbana already has higher property taxes. The city, the school district, and the park district all charge higher rates than their equivalents in Champaign. It's time to finally start balancing the scales. Let's seize this opportunity to make Urbana more business-friendly than Champaign in at least one way. I was sad when I read about Champaign raising its taxes this summer, but it made me smile that my city wasn't doing it. Perhaps that optimism was misplaced. Another way to look at the pig picture is looking at other downstate cities. The only other significant downstate city with a 9% sales tax is Decatur. Danville is at 8.75, and just about everything else is below that. Peoria, 8.25, Rockford, 8.25, Bloomington, Normal and Quincy, 7.75, Moline and Rock Island, 7.5, Springfield, 8, Cankey Key, 6.25, you get the picture. 9% is just way too high. It's not in the middle, it's not near the average. Even when I was in high-tax California this summer, I paid only 8% in the city of San Diego, and so-called Taxachusetts just has 6.25%. 9% is just a quarter percent below Chicago's rate, which is known to be one of the worst in the nation. We're not Chicago, let's not act like it. Also, Urbana is not just the city government, but every resident. All residents bear the burden, and we don't see, oh, only 1.5% is going to go to the city government, that's okay. No, we're going to see a 9% sales tax. Going to shop in Savoy is easy, and transferring business there, which people will do for a whole percent cheaper, doesn't hurt the Walmarts. They don't care if you shop in the Savoy Walmart or the Urbana Walmart, they still get the money. But it hurts the local shops, the mom-and-pop shops that only exist here in Urbana. I know we're falling on hard times economically. Citizens everywhere in Urbana and all of America feel it. But in these times, private citizens have to lower our spending, or either work harder to earn more money, or both. I think the city government should do the same. Either cut spending, or figure out how to provide the same services for less money, or both. Not just sign an edict and vote an edict that all of a sudden, everybody else needs to give the city more money. You know, I grew up in the suburbs of Chicago, and then I did four years of my undergrad in Needham, Massachusetts, near Boston. When I came here, I was really happy because I was going to finally get to be in a small town. I like small towns, and they seem to have common sense in the people there. You know, in Washington, they introduce legislation, they don't read it, they pass it without debate, and nobody knows how it's even going to affect anyone. In Springfield, which is controlled by the big-city Chicago bosses, they suddenly pass a surprise income tax increase at 1:00 AM, hours before the deadline. Here, we're a small town, we should wait, debate, give it some time, use some common sense. If the sales tax increase was so necessary, why didn't we start talking about it before? We've known about the Carl thing for months, but the first mention I can find of a higher sales tax in Urbana is August 23rd, which is a week and a half ago. We waited till Champaign gave us cover, and now all of a sudden, it's either do it now or don't do it. But that's not the fault of the citizens of Urbana. We're entitled to advance notice and a legitimate community discussion, not just a sudden edict from the mayor and the council. So let's give it some time, and if it has to be a year because of the Illinois deadline, then so be it, that's not the fault of the citizens. Just please, let's not have another burden in hard times. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
My name is Robert Weiss. I live in Talone, Illinois, but I do own property here in town. I got just two things I want to mention to you people. One is safety issue out along 130. You've got grass in the middle of the road, or if a person is crossing the street in a wheelchair, they'll be very difficult to see. That's one. What else you have out there? If you're leaving the Sunny Crest area, you cannot see a car coming till it's almost on you. That's a hazard, and I like to got hit out there when I was leaving Sunny Crest. Then, I was downtown because I was paying taxes today. I tried to pull into a drive, I've had no trouble in the past, it was plenty wide enough. But everything is changing downtown, they're tearing everything up. I don't think it's an improvement, what they're doing. They need more parking, for one thing. The area where I was was at Chase Bank, it is much narrower now. I had to wait for the cars to get out before I could even get in. And then you people here want more money. I've been watching and reading in the paper about Carl and you, you want to increase taxes? You ain't even managing what money that you have. You're supposed to be our caretakers. You're supposed to look out and make the money go further. There was no reason to change to downtown. You already had handicapped accessible. There was no reason in the world, and I can see that it needed to be done. It was just a way of the council here of spending money. I thank you.
Daryl Cruz. Okay. And Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood do not wish to speak, but they are concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council at this time? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. I don't think we have any unfinished business that we're going to deal with. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole. Diane?
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2013-08-044R, which is a resolution authorizing execution of a service agreement with the lowest responsible bidder for the supply of electricity for residential and small commercial retail customers who do not opt out of such a program. It's the Municipal Electric Aggregation 2013.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I have an amendment I'd like to offer. I want to change on the bottom, let's see. On the bottom of the page where it says, "Provided however that the energy price be paid per kilowatt hour." I wanted to insert a phrase there, it says, "Provided however that no renewable energy credits are purchased as part of the agreement and the energy price be paid per kilowatt hour." To, I think I sent that around, so people should have that. So that's my, I want to move to make that amendment.
I'll second.
You want to take out the energy credits?
Yeah. I think the way it is now is that through the operations manual, I think you're supposed to get two bids, you get one with credits and one without, and then this would give the mayor, or you know, the way we have it now, it would give the mayor the choice of picking one of those. So I'd like to just insert in there that we didn't, we would like not to have the energy credits, and we can discuss that if we're in discussion now.
Yeah, we are in discussion. I think we have Scott Tess here. That was sort of the core of our sustainability plan. Scott, there's a motion made by Bill Brown and seconded by Mike Madigan to take out the energy credits from the proposal for aggregation. So would you like to comment on that?
Sure. In terms of the value of the renewable energy credits for our climate action plan, it's, you know, estimated to be roughly about one-third of our 2025 goal. I know that Mr. DeBevick had testified here before and talked about the value of the credits. What I can say is that we use them as the EPA prescribes, we use them in the way that EPA offers a designation for cities to endorse, you know, endorse the cities using them, and so that gives me confidence in them.
Carol?
I don't know if I'm the only one not following this, but I have no idea what that means. So I'm not sure if it's a good amendment or not, because I don't know what the energy credits do.
Yeah, I think that we had a very long discussion about sustainability, and this is something that the Sustainability Advisory Commission came up with a plan, and so I think what we're talking about is I have a, what I did last time was we, the bids came in, and I called every council member to see if they thought, you know, which one we would take. So we all agreed. So I will call the council members again, but there was a reason that we put that in there. So do you want to say something else, Bill?
Yeah, I could just expand a little bit on why I think the energy credits aren't really worth it. For one thing, they aren't the same thing as carbon credits. Carbon credits are basically pollution permits. You can buy a carbon credit, and then you can, manufacturers that need to emit carbon can buy those from you for, if they need to emit a ton of carbon, they pay you for those. So if you buy a carbon credit, take it out of production, then that means somebody actually can't emit that carbon. But these are different. These are derived to basically just be an incentive to develop alternative energy, wind energy, or hydroelectric, or whatever. So then there's, but it's not a very good incentive because they're too cheap, basically. The production tax credit is really the main thing that drives the development of renewable energy. That's 2.2 cents per kilowatt hour. Our renewable energy credit that we buy to help subsidize this is .07 cents, so that's about 1/30 of what they get from the federal government just for producing the electricity. Another thing that drives the renewable energy market is long-term power contracts, where companies will contract with the wind company to produce power for the next 10 years and buy a certain amount. And it's hard to say exactly why they're paying high prices for that, but it probably has more to do with fear of regulation, fear of a carbon tax at some point. So they're buying these ahead, so that if a carbon tax comes along, they already have this wind energy to use. And then the other thing that drives it is more regulation from the state through renewable portfolio standards. So this is costing the city, it doesn't cost the city anything, and we won't get anything if we don't approve them, but it is costing the citizens through their energy bills about $60,000 a year for the city of Urbana. It's not a lot per citizen, but it's $60,000. So over the two-year contract, it'd be $120,000. So I think especially if we're going to be raising a quarter cent sales tax, and you know, asking people to pay an extra $600,000 a year, $60,000 credit off their energy bills seems reasonable to me.
We did save $1 million, though, on their bills. So that should be weighed in there, too. Eric?
Yeah, I'm strongly opposed to this amendment, and I've had long exchanges with Paul and Bob. A bill has been also copied on these. It's certainly true, now, I just want to put the $60,000 in perspective, that is approximately $3,000, $3 per household, because we have just under 20,000 households in Urbana. So are the renewable energy credits an efficient way to, an efficient way to promote renewable energy? They are less efficient than they should be because there are relatively few communities that participate, and that's really why we get them so cheaply. I made an analogy in a memo to Paul with a copy to you, Bill, that I thought that an individual community buying renewable energy credits was kind of like an individual voting. I know that when I go to the polls, my single vote is not really going to change the outcome of the election, but I get there every single opportunity I have for two reasons. One is it makes a statement that I believe in the democratic process, and secondly, if many, many people vote, and if many people vote for the kind of candidates that I support, there'll be a greater demand for and a greater supply of the, that type of candidate. And the same thing, I think, is true of the REX. If many communities buy REX, that will amount to a substantial incentive for building, for building wind power. So I think, I look at what is the upside and the downside of being wrong. Suppose that unlike ordinary markets, the REX market is so screwed up that it absolutely will not respond to increased demand. Suppose that, well, and I'm wrong about that, and I support REX. What have I done? We've made a symbolic statement that we favor renewals. But suppose that I say, according, as your amendment says, suppose that we don't get REX. Then what we've done is we have missed an opportunity to weigh in and be part of a substantial conversion of the nation's energy supply to renewables. So I, I guess I oppose your amendment about as strongly as I can oppose it.
Good Energy is going to offer an option of 100% renewables or 50% renewables this time, just for your information. And I talked with Tom Ley today, and he also said he expects the price of REX to be higher this time around than the 7 hundredths of a cent per kilowatt hour.
Anyone else? Charlie?
Well, I agree substantially with Eric. One of the things that we could do, though, is get a better quality REX, one that, say, is produced within the last six months. A lot of the REXs that are two years old or three years old, and that's one of the options that we've asked you to look for, is whether we can, and I know different cities have gotten better versions of REX in their, and I think age is one of the factors that's out there, whether it's really produced and used versus produced and maybe just burned into the ground. The other issue is, much like Eric's thinking, is that does a little bit of extra that Urbana pay add in some corresponding way to the total picture out there encouraging the move to renewable energy? And I think, you know, yes, this may be seen as a token effort. It is a small amount of money, $60,000, in the grand scheme of things, but in terms of the ratio, it's, you know, something that we as a population are doing as a city. We add to the pool of other cities doing this around the country. So the cost benefit may be small, but I think it's an important first step in moving this direction. If we could buy carbon credits, that, you know, might be a lot better way to go, but I don't see that as a viable option right now. So I agree with Eric.
Charlie, would you take the chair, please?
Sure. Mayor?
Urbana has often been a leader on social issues, and we have a long history. I mean, more recently, you heard about the civil rights issues, but more recently, we took a stand on people driving while talking on cell phones, and then the state adopted a statewide law, and I think that we have a long history of leading in the environmental area as well. So I see this, it's, nothing that we do is going to be perfect, but I think this is a step in the right direction.
Others? Diane? Diane was next, and I'll turn it back over to Mayor.
Just had a question. When the bids come in, you'll be polling individual council members again, is that right?
We'll tell you what the different results are.
So we'll get both prices?
Yeah, yeah, so you'll get both prices.
Options, okay.
So, you know, I did that last time, I had the total authority to do it, but I want you to understand what we're doing and get input from you, so we did call every single council member, and they all agreed that we got a great price, and we got a lower price than Champaign, which is always nice. Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, and the great thing about our decision last time was that we were able to support in the environmental choices, plus we got a tremendously better energy rate by doing the bidding than many could have believed, and so I think that far outweighs, I mean, the savings that we made, that we were the savings that we made, that we were able to procure for the customers who receive electricity in this town was incredible. So, I think that with that savings, we can afford to support some energy renewability in this portfolio.
Bill?
Yeah, I think it's, I still think it's a symbolic measure. I think it's like, it is a donation. It's a donation to the companies that produce the energy. And, I think I sent all of you a couple of the names of the companies that make a lot of money and this would just add to their bottom line. I'd rather see that money that the ratepayers in Urbana are paying go to energy efficient improvements in the city. We can't probably take that directly from that. Maybe we can, but I think we could at least move in that direction instead of sending the money outside the city to line the pockets of big energy companies. They're using these for various reasons. So, I kind of equate it to like when I give money to, say, W I L L and get a tote bag. Our energy credits, our REXs are the tote bag, except they're not quite as good as a tote bag because you can't use them for anything. You can't sell them. You can't do anything except maybe you get a green sticker you can put on your webpage. And, I think we are leaders and I'd rather see us be leaders in doing the right thing and being, having some green honesty about what this does and doesn't do.
Anyone else? Charlie?
I'll probably offer an amendment or a motion to staff after this is over, asking for staff and the Sustainability Commission in particular to take a look at what some of these alternatives might be. But, I think that's information we need to have between now and when this bid takes place. And, I think we do have the time to keep talking about this over the next few months, something I think, I don't think we need to really make a decision now. But, we can get more information. In particular, one of the things might be, well, you know, if we don't spend 60,000 or 80,000 on REX, could we capture that money and use it for, say, lighting retrofit? That lighting retrofit might have measurable impact on our energy consumption and would also have a payback, you know, say, over 10 or 15 years, maybe even faster. Some of the LED companies claim, you know, five-year paybacks on energy savings. So, those are the kinds of things that I would like to see us look at. And, I will offer that as a, as a direction to staff after this is, after this vote is taken.
Okay. Diane?
I just wanted to clarify. We will be getting a bid for 0% renewables, which would be what you're basically saying, 50% and 100%. So, until those bids actually come in and we're asked to make a decision, we do have some time to think about all this, so.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion to take out the REX from the proposal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Did you vote, Diane? Okay. All right. So, that motion, that amendment fails. Okay. Did you have an amendment, Charlie?
It's not an amendment. I think after the vote, I'll just make a motion directing staff.
Okay. All right. Now, we're back to the original motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Diane?
I move approval of Resolution Number 2013-08-045R, Resolution approving a professional energy consulting services agreement with Good Energy LP, Municipal Aggregation 2013.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
There was a sentence added to that contract. It's highlighted in yellow, just clarifying that we, we'll pay lower fees for the current contract and then after June of 2014, we'll go to the higher fees going Good Energy. Just.
Okay, a slight revision from what was originally presented last week, a correction. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could get my direction, or my motion directing staff, if that's permissible here?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to move to direct staff to look at alternatives, both within REX as well as programs that might spend money on local conservation projects that could be effective ways of reducing our energy footprint and similarly our, and as a consequence, our carbon footprint.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that's a good idea. We should understand what we're going to get for each dollar.
And, I meant to say staff and Sustainability Commission in particular, have them look at it with us.
Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin, I believe. Dennis?
Yeah, and just for clarification, if we're, I guess, I guess I'd like to know if we can, how that money, if it was saved, would come to use for the goals that Charlie's looking for. Because, I don't see a direct path from one to the other, so I don't know how that would work out. And, if it's not feasible, I think we should know about that.
Right. If we choose not to, not to purchase renewable energy credits, we don't, the city doesn't get that $120,000. The renewable energy credits are paid directly from the ratepayer at a per-kilowatt price to the supplier. So, you know, it's, the city's not, never has their hands on it. There's no pass-through. So, if, for instance, you wanted to save seven hundredths of a cent on the renewable energy credits and spend it on something else, the way you would have to do that is eliminate the REX and raise the city fee, which is a separate line item.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Diane?
And, Item C, well, was sent to council with no recommendation, but for purposes of discussion, I will move Ordinance Number 2013-08-075 and Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Section 22-1, which is the Home Rule Municipal Retailers and Service Occupation Tax 2013.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. We have two groups that, or two people that want to speak, Michael Wilmore and Jason Scott.
I'm Michael Wilmore. I'm staff representative for ASME Council 31. Pleased to be here tonight to speak in favor of this ordinance. We support this ordinance. I do have to say, I'm a little concerned about some recent news developments that there were talks of some fairly major cuts coming in the Public Works Department as well as the UPD Support Staff. I want to point out that these folks do very critical work to the city. $600,000 in cuts would certainly affect the services that we're able to provide to the citizens of Urbana. And, I'll turn it over to Jason for some further clarification.
Thank you. My name is Jason Scott. I'm a City of Urbana Public Works employee and the president of the ASME Local 1331 Union. We are Public Works, Urbana Police Department Support Staff and Parking Employees. We do work that the city, for the city that needs to be done. I'm here tonight to ask City Council to support the current level of city services that we provide. A lot of us live in Urbana and all of us certainly spend money in Urbana, so we are taxpayers also. There are those who will say, but shouldn't we cut more costs? Urbana City employees know that we have cut positions at the same time our workload has increased. We have seen a steady reduction in our numbers over the years and we are already stretched thin. We are already doing more with less. And, we are proud to say we do still provide quality and critical services to the citizens of Urbana. We don't want to see the city reach a breaking point with staffing numbers and the services that we are able to provide. Urbana citizens certainly don't need less services during these difficult times. They need more. And, a hard winter is being forecasted in the coming months. Now is the time for the city to act to fund the work that needs to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do. Daryl Cruz?
I think we can thank everybody for the work that they're doing and especially the issues that you have to deal with. First of all, I want to thank those city council members that have assisted me in this discussion and shared information with me to help understand what exactly is going on with regards to our finances. And, I want to make it perfectly clear, I don't think there's an easy answer. And, I'm not trying to dismiss or avoid the short or long-term financial problems created by the Carl effect. What I am suggesting is a more systematic and coordinated approach to its resolution than what we're experiencing these two weeks. And, I want to begin with the budget. We can come up and speak philosophically and what I've been trying to do is understand Urbana's budget. What is the financial actual situation? What flexibility? What options? What things exist within a budget that can relate to revenue savings or cost cuts that can make sense to address the Carl effect? And, in looking at the current budget, one of the things I noticed, the 2013 and 14 budget, is that at the end of the 2012 budget, we still have projected balances. And, that's very common at the end of each year. And, the 2013, 14 budget is based on those projections at the end of the year and not actuals. And, I have heard repeatedly, Ron Eld, the region of city council, say they take a conservative approach to revenue and also expenditures. And, I'm not sure how the city council can know for sure unless somebody up there can tell me what was the end of your actuals and how does that impact positively and negatively in the projected budget you have for this year. I think that in itself is a significant question to ask. I would also say that part of the problem that I find in many people I talk to is thus far, the only thing that's been discussed in the media to address the Carl effect, other than the legislation, is that the property taxes are going to have to be raised 11% to make up the difference. That's all I've seen. In addition to, a week and a half ago, now we have a sales tax option that we can use to address it. I would suggest to you that it is unfair to the public to be only talking about taxes without looking at any of the other possibilities or options that may exist within the city's budget that makes sense. I'm not talking about hurting people who work for the city. I'm talking about common sense approaches of looking at what we are doing. There are a host of options out there and the mayor base suggested a few of them tonight. What's unfortunate is, is the public is not going to be able to respond to any of those recommendations tonight before you take potentially a vote on the sales tax in terms of, oh, this makes more sense than that, or this is whatever. Where is citizen participation and transparency in a discussion of this issue on a broader, larger basis in terms of choices that are made? I and many others believe that raising taxes should be your last option taken to solve a financial problem. And, it should be in the context of a full discussion of all options available to the city council. I don't believe we have yet reached that threshold of transparency, accuracy of financial accounting, in-depth discussion of options, and the opportunity for public participation input in that process to this point for you to decide to approve a sales tax.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Rather, tonight, I would simply encourage you to temporarily postpone action on the sales tax to give yourself time, the community time, to do due diligence regarding all options available to you in order to make the best decisions with regards to revenue growth and cost reductions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council on this issue? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Carol?
So, I've been looking at all of this for the last. So, a couple of weeks and something that strikes me, as it has been said on both sides, we have the issue of people concerned about their jobs, which is a normal concern. We also have the issue of not looking at other ways to address the issue and we've not had that opportunity. As a new council member, I'm really stuck. I'm stuck in the sense that I've not had the benefit of council goal and discussion. I haven't had the benefit of looking at all the budget with the council and saying, hey, what's our priorities this year? So, those benefits weren't offered to me to date. And, so, now we're being asked to, I've gotten lots of communications about not raising the sales tax. The impact on the poor is evident. And, the district that I represent has a high number of people who are struggling currently with the tax issue. But, I think it's unfair in some sense to not have it, as is Daryl Cruz just said, a last option. Can it be a last option? Yes. Does it have to be this option at this moment? I'm not convinced that it has to be because we've not looked at some of the things that I received when I first came on the council that was proposed to address consolidating in certain areas, to save money in other areas that was listed from the former comptroller. Right now, we have not received any of that, only cuts that have already been made. But, I don't know how that actually affects the budget because the cuts have already been made. So, we still have this shortfall regardless to the cuts that have been made already. I think that the discussion certainly needs to be broader and two weeks just not, doesn't give me an opportunity to look at some other areas. And, I just am not comfortable at this point raising that sales tax.
I would like to say that the cuts that have been made are since the budget was passed. That's why I sent you this memo. These are things that we've done since we got the additional surprise from Carl. And, it's coming off of a long, long discussion on the budget that has lasted for months. So, you know, basically, we have a $1 million gap. And, what I've proposed is spending cuts of over $650,000 and a revenue increase of $343,000. So, that's one way to do it. And, if somebody has a better idea, they're certainly welcome to present it. But, when somebody tells you that we have a $14 million surplus, they're completely off-base. They didn't read the budget correctly. They didn't even read the letter which explains it. They're just picking a number off of a chart without understanding what the number means. That was all the funds combined and it also is not money that is available for spending. So, what we have in the general fund is a $1 million gap. And, I have put together the way that, one way that we can bridge it. And, if you want to keep talking about it, you're certainly, you know, welcome to do that. But, if you talk about it too long, we're going to get paralysis by analysis, I'm afraid. And, we're going to miss an opportunity to get $343,000, which we desperately need.
So, if I can just, just, I'm looking at the paper that we got tonight. And, even on here, it says actuals, but when I asked what the number was, it wasn't it, the actual because the books aren't closed yet.
Yeah, that's a very good point. We don't really know, we can compare month to month where we were last year, but it takes a long time to get the books closed. So, we don't really have the final numbers for the year ended June 30th. We are generally operating with estimates. But, when you look back over the years, we haven't been off by that much. I did the budget for Champaign County for, you know, a lot, many years. And, I found out that we generally spent about 96% of the budget, 94 to 96% of the budget. On, you know, when you have the appropriations, that's what you end up spending. And, that seems to be a rule that holds in this city as well. As the budget gets tighter and tighter, that percentage might go up. But, we pretty much know that we're going to end up with maybe 96 or 97% of it spent. much know that we're going to end up with maybe 96% or 97% of it spent. And on the revenue estimates, we do have preliminary, but I think there still is a gap, and the gap is from the budget estimates.
So maybe Mike, when he gets around to it, can explain this sheet for me. This sheet that you sent us.
Do you want to do that now?
Well, that came from the budget forecast document that Michael Madigan had requested, and that a number of people got copies of that, and this is, it's up through June 30th. So I just took the totals that were listed there and listed them. I thought it would give you a snapshot of where we are at with what were actual for the fiscal year compared to what was budgeted.
Dennis?
Well, I think for the benefit of the people who are watching television or whatever who didn't get this memo, could you just read the memo? I mean, what it shows is expected incomes and budget shortfalls for the year. Do you want to specify some of these?
I could summarize it real quick. It shows our total sales taxes, and that includes use tax, food and beverage, packaged alcohol. Came in at 9.45 million. We'd budgeted 9.67 million. Our property tax levy was 7.7 million, but with the Carl effect, it's down to 6.8 million. That's the most dramatic reduction. Utility tax was 36,000 under what we had budgeted, not a big deal, 2.6 million. Telecommunications tax was $74,000 short at 1.01 million. Electric aggregation, because of initial early optimistic figures we got from the utility, we budgeted 135,000 for the city municipal fee. We got 94,000. Cable TV fees came in a little less, 38,000 less than we had budgeted. We budgeted 549,000, came in at 511,000. The state income tax was our one big bright spot. It came in at 3.93 million. We had budgeted 3.72 million. Something we didn't include in the budget, but became a revenue source for us during the year was video gambling. We got 52,000 for the past fiscal year, and it looks like that may well be in the 70 or 80,000 this coming year. So that shortfall for all those added up to about 9.78 million, which is kind of another million-dollar gap.
You mean 978,000?
No, I'm sorry, 978,000, excuse me.
Thank you.
I just want to ask Mike. I'm sorry. Do you want to go here?
So I'm struck by how people use language. People who are opposing this tax increase say that we ought to cut costs. They never mention that we might have to cut services. Of course, we have people here who are providing services. I think that the city of Urbana workforce is just really, overall, a gem. I have, I never, ever, ever hear from constituents or any other residents of Urbana that they have been treated rudely, inefficiently, anything like that by our workforce. It's really quite the opposite. And I think we have a lean workforce. I think if you're talking about cutting positions, you are in fact going to be talking about cutting services. And I will frankly oppose that. I also hear people on the other side talk about us and you. Everybody on this side of the desk is a citizen of Urbana. We pay property taxes, too. We pay sales taxes, too. There wasn't something that miraculously happened when we came over and agreed to sit here that made us not pay our fair share of the taxes, made us not, you know, be in the same boat as everybody else. We may differ on particular issues, we may have different views, but we are not a different species. You and we are the same. The 11% property tax that was mentioned as having been mentioned in the media, nobody on this side of the table is talking about that. I have, it's never been mentioned in any private conversation. Where that number came from is that is the fraction of our property tax revenue that we're not going to get from Carl. But nobody here is talking about making up any part of that by increasing the property tax. We did not make Carl not have to pay tax. They hired a bunch of accountants and a bunch of lawyers that convinced the state regulators that they are a charity. No, they are not a charity. You go over there, you deal with them as a patient, you walk the gilded halls, you look at the salaries that their top executives are being paid. These folks are no, by no common sense definition, are they a charity. And we are trying to get that addressed legislatively. Whether that's going to be possible or not, we don't know. But in the meantime, we've got bills to pay. We can't, the city of Urbana can't print money. So the, so I agree that we have not looked in detail at all of the components that we are going to do. We know, I'm looking at now our employees, you probably have heard that we are probably going to have to ask you to chip in for your health care, that that is on the table, that this is, but we can't, we don't have details about that because we're still negotiating with providers, and because there are some aspects of the new health care law that are going to affect that. But that will probably amount to several hundred thousand dollars. So the, I can't see a way to deal with what we have to deal with without this tax increase being part of the package, even though we don't know what the entire package is going to be. So for that reason, I will support it.
Charlie, would you please take the chair?
Sure. Mayor?
I did talk about an 11% property tax increase. That's what I'm trying to avoid. I want to find another way to bridge the Carl effect that doesn't involve punishing the property owners of Urbana, the businesses and all the residents by having to take on the burden of Carl to maintain our level of services. So we're trying to cut, this proposal that I have has more cuts in it, mostly from health insurance because we don't know what we can do yet, but I think we can make some cuts there because the Affordable Care Act is going to provide some very good options for people, and they might find that they save money by going that route for family coverage than having the city pay part of it. So that would save them, and it would save the city. So some of this stuff is still yet to be determined, so there's no way that we can tell you exactly what all the options are because some of the options haven't been worked out. But what I've given is an outline, and certainly I am very open to other suggestions, but I want to assure you that no, we do not have $14 million that we can bridge this gap.
Please, please, you're out of order. Dennis?
Yeah. The, how to regulate and how to meet the burdens of the city's finances is certainly not an easy question. When you talk about, you know, the city's part of the property tax, you have to realize that the city only gets 18% of the entire property tax amount, and we don't have any control over the other people who collect property taxes for their sustenance, which includes the park division, includes the school district, it also includes our, the community college here in town, and others. And so the city has tried not to make the amount of money that it is levying for its property tax to change at all. But other municipality, other, other community elements in this, in Urbana, have different opinions and have different needs, and they're raising, perhaps they're raising their property taxes or asking for a larger amount. One of the things that we have tried to do successfully is to not lay people off in this community. And if you were at the university and you were employed there and you received a layoff notice a couple of years ago, and if you are a person who doesn't have, you know, a $100,000 income of a professor, but if you're a staff person or a worker, you know, for the, for the public works part of the university, you're going to be paying, you know, those people, those individuals are going paycheck to paycheck to cover their expenses. And to be laid off is to jeopardize, you know, foreclosure of your home. It may change the ability for you to send your daughter or son to college. It will have a very large effect. So I think we ought to honor the fact that the mayor is doing everything that's possible not to lay people off or to, and whatever cuts are happening, whatever reductions are happening in the pay, in the staffing of the city, is through attrition, through retirement, through people moving on to other positions. And I think that these things have to be recognized. Even the quarter percent tax increase that we're debating now about sales tax is not really going to fill the gap. It's only part of the potential way to correct the deficit that we're looking at this coming year because Carl's property tax values have been changed by the state government. So at this point, I guess I have to say that I'd rather, I'd rather raise the sales tax a quarter of a cent than to see people laid off.
Anyone else? Diane?
I've, I'm going to support this sales tax increase. It's a local home rule sales tax. It's raised, it's increasing from 1.25% to 1.5%. I don't like doing it. I don't like tax increases at all, ever, but at this time, I think we need to do it in order to maintain the basic level of services that we have to provide as a city. I do want to point out that it's also far less damaging to people in Urbana than a property tax increase, and I want to avoid that at all costs because none of us can afford to pay more property taxes. I also want to make sure the public understands what this sales tax does not apply to. It doesn't apply to services, even though service is in the title. You go to the beauty shop, you don't pay this sales tax. If you buy product from your stylist, you would pay the sales tax. It doesn't apply to groceries that you buy at the grocery store and take home to eat. It doesn't apply to prescription and non-prescription drugs and medicines. It doesn't apply to medical devices or supplies. It doesn't apply to big-ticket items like cars or boats or motorcycles or anything that's titled or registered, which would actually include my canoe, now that I think about it. So there are a lot of exclusions for basic necessities that are not taxed by this tax, and that's also a factor that I, that I'm taking into account. It does cover food and beverages purchased in restaurants and bars and many other items, and includes everything you buy in Champaign as of January 1st, 2014. So as Dennis pointed out, and anybody looking at the budget will see that this is not going to solve our problem. There are a lot of unknowns out there that we have no control over, including to a large extent, the outcome of some of our contract negotiations, the impact of the Affordable Care Act, the cost of asphalt. And through all of that, we're expected to supply services that people have come to expect. So for now, I'm going to support this sales tax increase. However, I really expect that we will meet soon as a council to do our mayor, city council goals, and that the very first thing we'll be talking about is looking at the budget as a whole. We have new council members who, who need to get up to speed on the budget, and all of us need a refresher, and I think we will be looking, we have to continue to look at cost reductions, and we can't exclude any categories. So we'll be looking at how we run our facilities. I think we need to look at personnel, the services we provide, and all sorts of programming. Those aren't off the table, and more cuts have to be made. We'll also have to look at some revenue growth, but this is just the beginning of the process. But this home rule sales tax increase is, is, I think, necessary at this time. And it's, it's the beginning of a process that's going to take for, you know, months. But we need to do this, we need, as a council, we need to get together and, and work on this.
Charlie?
I've been holding off on calling a goals thing with the, queuing Mike up already to start thinking about it, but I was, I was looking at early October to start that process, hoping to get through all these other issues first. To add to the comments that have been eloquently made by several of you, there are two little facts I want to throw out there. A quarter cent sales tax is basically 25 cents on $100. A lot of it's discretionary things that you buy. So when you think of it that way, it's a small amount of money. When you think about the impact on potential staff, it's eight or nine public work staff. It's three and a half police officers. It's probably four firefighters. That sort, if you think of it that way, then you can understand why paying 25 cents on a dollar, on $100 is probably a better choice. It's a better choice for me, and so I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Mike?
Well, I also appreciate a lot of the comments that have been said tonight, and also thank you, Mike, for putting this document together. Actually, what I had requested, and it was kind of along the lines of Carol's comments, what I had requested from city staff was, in order to help me a little bit better understand some of the big line items of the budget and some of the small, I asked for 2013 actual budgeted, 2013 actual expended, and 2013 balance per line item, okay? And I received that, and I haven't had a chance to really, really delve into it. There are a lot of acronyms in here, there are a lot of abbreviations. I'm probably going to want to sit down with the comptroller or someone to try to better understand some of these, but I appreciate what everybody is also saying, too, about the service that the city staff provides, that the city employees provide. I was in no way suggesting that there be layoffs to make this happen, to make the budget balance, although it came off that way in the newspaper. I was just suggesting that we need to be, maybe, at least in the short term, continue to be vigilant about maybe lagging positions, maybe consolidating something here or there if we can to help create some savings in what's 18 million of the $34 million budget. But in no way am I suggesting layoffs. And to further illustrate my point about why I don't think that has to happen, the top 53 line items of our budget, every one of them had more than a $100,000 balance at the end of the year. Now, let's say 40 of those are ongoing projects that, you know, Bill Gray or whoever has, has, you know, in the pipeline. Let's take all of those out. Are we really saying we can't find one or two or three of those lines that ended up having 100,000 or more, and the median of those had almost a quarter million at the end of the year? So to me, I think we should be spending the next two weeks, because this doesn't have to happen tonight, we should be spending the next two weeks scouring those and taking another look at, with our interim comptroller, where we can avoid another tax increase, whether people want to consider it de minimis or not. people want to consider it de minimis or not. It may be de minimis on its own. It is part of a much larger problem that is happening in our community with regard to what's going to happen with the property tax, whether it's in Urbana or not. I think these next two weeks, we should look really hard at those line items. Heck, let's just take the top 50 and see what we can find. There has to be money there. There has to be in a $34 million budget, and I know the mayor and her chief of staff and everyone has been working very hard on this. Let's just double down for two more weeks, and therefore, I move, per city council rules, to defer this to the next city council meeting, and would appreciate a second.
I guess there's no debate over that? Okay. I would like to comment to answer your question. When I said that we spend 96%, that's what you're seeing when you see an unexpended balance. So there's no vote on this then? Okay, so we will defer this until September 16th.
I also wanted to ask, if I could, Mayor, if Mike's chart that he sent, something that just drew my attention, I'm not a comptroller, but for instance, putting 135,000 into municipal aggregation, for instance, something that we hadn't had before, we put that into the budget as actual budgeted figure, and now we're adding 40,636, I mean, dollars to our budget deficit, as if we knew somehow we would get that money. We had no way of knowing that. I would like for you to, if you could, break out these areas that you have and give me some more explanation of them, like cable TV fees, I don't even know what that is, or telecommunication tax. I have no idea what that is, what we should have gotten, what we didn't get. It's just not self-explanatory, okay?
We can do that, Carol, but in your budget book, they have an explanation of the various city taxes, and that could help you what the rates are and stuff like that.
Next, reports of special committees? That simple? I don't think we have any. Do we?
Sure.
Reports of officers, monthly economic development report, Tom Carino.
Everyone should have received a copy of the monthly economic development report. Just to highlight a few items, the 38th Annual Sweet Corn Festival was a big success. Initial indications are that gross revenue was up. Net profit hasn't been determined yet because expenses are still coming in as vendors turn in tickets and expenses get paid. But several downtown business owners who had expressed concern in the past have expressed excitement at the changes that happened at Sweet Corn this year, and we've gotten feedback from those downtown merchants that they like the changes that were implemented this year. Aside from that, the project at 206, 208, and 210 West Main has seen some activity. Cathedral Consulting has moved into 206 West Main and CoLab. Also, there is work for other tenants going on. Also in downtown, The Butcher is making progress at 119 West Main, which is the former Das Cafe. And Satara, the restaurant that is at the former Black Rock, former Embassy, actually had a soft opening today, had lunch there today, and it was great. So I suggest everyone give it a try. Also, other things going on related to arts activities, the fourth Art at the Market Workshop, Letterpress with Soybean Press, actually had a record number of attendees at 257 people, so that was a great project. Five new murals on glass installations have been installed in downtown, one at the South Parking Deck Tower, one at the Urbana Business Association offices, two new installations at the Civic Center, and then the Lincoln in the grass actually has stayed for another year that's on the parking deck, and so some great installations. And that's about all I have. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Anybody have a question for Tom? Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could, if there are materials that are ready to start discussing, there's nothing that stops us from discussing the tax-related items at next week's committee meeting, even though this is, the vote has been deferred for, you know, to our next regular council meeting, we can take this up in discussion if we choose if there are materials ready and it gets put on, you know, as a discussion item. And I suspect there will be, you know, there's been an onslaught of information available, so I say keep it coming, but give us time to digest it.
I would agree with that.
If you have specific questions, that would be very helpful. Is there something that you're curious about?
I think some of the things that, you know, putting some meat on the bones on some of these different ones that have come out in the last, you know, 48, 72 hours would be good.
Eric?
Yeah, so I have a specific question. So the sheet that Mike sent to us identified about a million dollar shortfall in fiscal year 2013, but our, the bottom line, the cash on hand at the end of 2013 is about $2 million less than the end of 2012. So there's another million dollars somewhere in there that I am curious about. So if that could be fleshed out, that would be, I'd really appreciate that.
Okay.
And Mayor?
Yes.
If you would introduce Rich, maybe?
I did ask him to come.
He's right back here.
Oh, he's back there. I was looking for him. Well, there you are, Rich. Didn't see you. Why don't you come up and get grilled by this group? They think you're going to be able to give them all the answers, but you're trying to figure out what the questions are, right?
Yeah, exactly right.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and say where you've been and what you're working on right now?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Henshaw. I'm the interim comptroller. My background is in finance and accounting. I worked for government agencies and nonprofits for most of my career. In the recent past, I was a budget manager for Lake County, just north of Cook County, and last year, for a few months, I was the interim finance director for the city of Bloomington. So I'm here to help out as long as I can and answer any questions you might have.
Do you want to tell them what you've been doing? Here? What you've been doing here? I mean, just trying to get a grip on understanding it, right?
Primarily is understanding it, is exactly right. Figuring out, my primary goal is to just keep the functions, the business functions that go through the finance department moving on a daily basis, so they don't get too far behind, and obviously trying to avoid making any mistakes. So the books are as current as possible. It's a great help that Ron Eldridge is still tasked with completing the audit for the fiscal year that's just completed. That's an immense help, but as you talked about this evening, the books for 2013 are not yet closed, so some of the analysis that would be helpful of something like this time would, is not quite ready yet. So we will delve in and look at the particulars as we can and help where we can. So it's really a learning experience or curve right now.
Charlie?
Rich, do you have an estimate about maybe when you'd have some numbers that you could finalize the different parts of the last budget?
It's kind of up to Ron's work right now. I need to check in with him to see where he's at with making any final entries or final adjustments he needs to do to the books for 2013. He may have worked up those adjustments, but they need to be posted in the system because that's the information I use is what's posted in the system. Hopefully, within the next week or two, I would think, he might be at a point we can get those in. But I have to check with him for certainty.
Dennis?
Just a word of thanks to you as interim comptroller. We had a question about a project that we've been doing for Citrus Cities International, and this has to do with a 150, $15,000 grant that came through the city over the last couple of years, and we needed to get three years' worth of expenditures and disbursements sorted out to make sure that we were not mixing up two different grant funds. And I was able to get that spreadsheet for the last three years, practically instantaneously from Rich, so I really appreciate your efficiency. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Just as an example, that things are really looking pretty good there.
Eric?
So I also want to extend my thanks for coming. It seems as though through circumstances completely outside of maybe anybody's control, but certainly yours, that you will be the single person in the city employ whose work will be most subject to scrutiny. So not to put you under any pressure, but welcome to the shark pond.
Pleasure to be here. We're welcome to scrutiny. It helps us keep our toes in line and do the right thing.
Carol?
Which means that you're the man who will answer all those questions about why there's seemingly $100,000 in these line items left over.
Mike and I are going to work together on that.
All right.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thanks, my pleasure to be here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, Bill Gray wanted to give a report, public works director.
Just wanted to update council on two matters. One is the university district traffic circulation study. Open house is this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Activities and Recreational Center on campus at 201 East Peabody. You may recall a few weeks ago that Sharif Ula from the COAT staff gave a detailed presentation on the status of that study and some of the recommendations, and anyway, this open house will allow the public to comment on the, on that study. The second item is on Thursday, September 12th, again, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Lincoln and Illinois Streets is the, what's becoming an annual Light the Night campaign where we distribute to those bicycles that do not have lights, front and rear lights, free lights that are installed on bicycles. This is largely targeted towards students, but literally anyone that does not have lights on their bikes for nighttime riding need to stop by between 4:00 and 7:00 o'clock on the 12th of September, Thursday, at Illinois and Lincoln. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other reports of officers? Okay, the next item is new business ordinance number 2013-09-078, and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, multi-part zoning ordinance text amendment. And Robert Myers is here to explain this.
Thank you. About once a year, we publish the zoning ordinance as a whole document. We take this as an opportunity to present to you some, a number of small, quick fixes, I'll call them, that are efficient to do all at once. So what you have before you is a proposed update on a number of small things that wouldn't necessarily warrant bringing something to you on its own, it's creating a separate case for them. But I'm just going to characterize a few of these, not go through all of them. A few that come to mind are, we'd like to ask for, we're proposing that an intent be added to the home occupation section to help guide the zoning administrator when home occupation permits are issued. Give you an example, earlier this year, we had a home occupation permit application for a candy store, which was just a straight-out retail business to be, wanted to be located in someone's house. And through this and some other applications, we've really found that it needs to provide an intent so that we don't end up with retail businesses or people asking for that in residential zone areas. We're proposing to add illustrations to make it easier for people to understand the ordinance and interpret the ordinance, several changes to the table of uses, adding things like farmer's market. And also, you may not know, the hospitals are now allowed by right in the B3 general business district, although we're proposing to make that a special use permit so that when hospitals, such as Provena and Carl, when they expand, that we'd have a chance to review the impacts. Hospital is a regional use with, it's a traffic generator, and so, as you probably know, a pawn shop is special use permit, requires special use permit in a B3 general business district, but as stands right now, hospitals are allowed by right. Also, some minor changes to accessory parking standards, and also about recreational vehicles and how those are stored. We want to make sure that our enforcement, rules for enforcement are clear so that we can follow up on reports that we have. For instance, when people are occupying or living essentially in RV, we'd like to be able to follow up on that without delay. The planning commission reviewed this, proposed ordinance at their last meeting, and recommended unanimously for approval with a couple of minor changes which have been incorporated in this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Dennis?
Maybe not so much a question, but I just wanted to say that as reviewing some of the changes that were created in the document, actually, I do have one question for you. But first, I thought it was very interesting. First of all, one of the things that was addressed having to do with parking and parking ratios for necessity for development is that there's now an incentive to designate a legacy tree on a property, and the incentive is that if you find a legacy tree and you designate it, the restrictions on a parking may be altered so that it might be reduced somewhat to allow for the tree to grow and prosper. I think that's totally cool. Another thing about the parking and trees in parking lots is there was stipulation that trees that are put in a lot must be a shade tree. So I was sort of wondering, does that eliminate narrow-growth poplars for being placed in that position? A lot of times, narrow-growth trees were designated because they fit cityscapes, so, but the intent would be then to provide shade in a large parking lot?
There's actually a special definition for shade tree. And it's a list, it's a list that has been developed by our city arborist over the years, and includes trees that do well in the environment of a parking lot or along, or street trees for that matter as well, because they have to take, there are certain stresses in and around parking lots, the heat effect, salt from snow removal, things like that. Also, some trees just don't do as well in those sorts of environments. So we've chosen trees that do better. Having said that, a lot of times, trees that would, a lot of times go within a parking lot, we'd allow them to go around the edge because they just survive a lot longer and are, it's a lot more hardy when they're in groupings and they go around the edge of a parking lot. So we do have some flexibility to allow them to be, instead of being in the middle in this tiny little island, sometimes we allow them to be along the edge where they can grow better.
And my other question that I have for you is maybe actually a more significant one, I don't know. I've noticed that there's a redirection of application permit requests along the Boneyard Creek, and that sounds to me like the Boneyard Creek Commission, which is three people, is no longer deciding a lot of these decision, making the decisions, but some of these applications are being sent to the planning commission itself, which maybe is wiser because they're a larger body to make the decisions. But does that mean that the Creek Commission, the Boneyard Creek Commission is, has less to do, I mean, I don't even know when they meet, but it's just three people. And is this considered a more efficient change for the zoning or for that creek?
You know, we researched this very question, and technically, there was never any Boneyard Creekway Commission, although there is a Boneyard Creekway Commissioner, I believe, that there's someone who's a technical expert in stormwater who assists the zoning administrator in making a determination on the permit application, and so they meet as a group administratively, but they've never met in a, as a public body. But application- But applications that, there are some bonus provisions that if applicants are seeking them, they can go to the planning commission or even potentially the city council if they're seeking something that's above and beyond what the administrative staff feels like that they're able to grant. I would add that while we tried to do with the Boneyard Creekway ordinance, it's not really to change anything, but just to clarify, because the way it's worded currently, honestly, is confusing, and the process is not always perfectly clear, so we'd like to clarify that. So, we're really just intending to state how we believe it's, was always intended to be written.
Okay, well, that's probably useful because, I mean, there have been contentions in the past concerning the creek and, you know, permitting, you know, allowing easements into the creek area up to, you know, up to or past the original perimeter that was supposed to be protected. And so, it needs to be reviewed by some public body that's not just an administrative body, and so I think that this is an improvement, so it was very nice to see that. And it was kind of an odd way to learn about it, but I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? Charlie?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things I wanted to follow up on this, and I'm wondering if the council would mind sending this to committee next week. I don't know if there's any rush to get this done, but I have a couple of items in here that I don't really have formulated well to ask as questions. I want to do a little more research and take this up in committee. One of those is related to bicycle parking, the other is related to home occupations. The home occupation stuff is really tightened up in here, and I want to play with that a little bit and talk about that with staff before we go forward on this.
Are you making?
So, I would move to send this to committee next week.
Second. Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Finally, we have one appointment to the Civil Service Commission. I'm recommending Tom Betts. He served for many.
So-much.
Second.
Yours on this county board?
Outstanding.
Okay, yes. Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin, is that correct?
And I have a question.
Sure.
Is the Civil Service Commission now fully, is now filled?
Yes, we have three people, and two of them are Democrats and one is Republican, which is the requirement. Okay, any other questions about this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you all very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.